When is town meeting again?
June 6th.
6th of the 8th, 8th, that's 8th. 6th is 7th.
6th is graduation, 8th is...
Nobody tells you.
Okay, great. The hour being 6:30 and it is April 27th, we'd like to start the board of selectmen's meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As is the tradition, every year after election, we reorganize, so I would like to step down in his chair and give the imaginary gavel to our town manager, Mr. LaFond, if he would like to entertain motions. If the board would humor me, I'd like to make the first motion if I could. Mr. Chairman?
At least another 10 seconds. You have one.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will make a motion that we appoint Mr. Franny as chairman of the board of selectmen.
I'll second that.
Are they reading on the motion? Going twice, three times. Motion for Mr. Franny as chairman. Second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote?
Do we...
Would you like me to deal with the vice chairmanship? Mr. Chairman?
Do I do it or I'll do it?
Your meeting now.
Yeah.
You don't want to get blamed for what he does, so...
Thank you.
So where am I sitting?
Well, from right now, you're sitting here. That could change, too.
Thank you. Right now, I'd entertain motions for vice chairman. Motions?
I'll make a motion to nominate Maureen.
I nominate you.
Maureen, no, Wilson will nominate Maureen.
Is he one?
Hmm?
I would make a confirmation if you would like.
No, that's fine. I mean, don't fight over...
I can hear a motion, Andy.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Maureen, second by by saying aye. Unanimous, congratulations, Maureen.
Maybe I can move down one more.
Thank you.
Maybe I want to sit here.
I get to say it.
Seriously, what's going to happen here?
No, you're not kidding. Go down. It's talking next to Andy again.
Is that your water?
That's Mike's.
Oh, that's Mike's. It is.
No, that's not mine.
Is that yours?
No, that's mine.
I'd like to do things different, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, second. Oh, I got...
First order of business, and Kenny, I was always doing a very good job with this, and I'd ask for your help going forward. Kenny, on the public announcements, you always came up with a lot of good information to, you know, announce events and stuff like that. So if you would, Kenny, if you'd help me out with that, I'd appreciate it. So, public announcements, Alex Swift.
The Abington Education Foundation will host the Derby Night at the Races. I believe this is the second, the third year they've done this. The date is this Friday evening, May 1st, 7 to 10, at the Knights of Columbus, 254 Hancock Street, Abington. Enjoy a night at the races while supporting Abington Education Foundation. Cost is $20 per ticket, and it includes funny money for betting on the races. Prizes for best derby attire, bring your own snacks, cash bar and dessert table, and a 50-50 raffle. So, please get out and support them. This is a 21-plus event only, and if you want to reserve a table, you can email abingtoneducationfoundation@gmail.com.
Thank you, Alex. And I'm sorry, Alex, I want to welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Kenny?
I have nothing. I passed them all off there.
You want one?
Andy, you have anything?
No, just what's on here. You're going to read these others, the...
You want us, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine.
All right.
I do have one, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The announcement here for the 17th Annual Duck Race. The swans may be hanging out at Island Grove, but the ducks will soon be at Beaverbrook Playground. The Abington Music Parents Association is holding its 17th Annual Duck Race. Many people have taken their kids there every year since they were toddlers. It's one of the most, you know, one of the favorite annual events here in town. Be sure to save the date for this year's race. It's Sunday, May 17th, at Beaverbrook Playground in Abington. The race begins at 1:00 PM. Proceeds from this event will go to support the music program in Abington Public Schools. You do not need to be present to win, however. You can, if you do go, by all means, bring your cameras. It's a lot of fun. My understanding, it's $5 per duck, and you can certainly, if you want more information, you can visit Abington Music Parents on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. On the public announcements, you have the Sage Committee's Community Gardens' first meeting will be on May 5th, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the Barclay Room. I believe that has to do with people that have signed up with the gardens?
There are still, I talked to Lorraine Ryerson on Saturday, there are still plots available if anybody's interested. They can contact the Sage Committee.
Yeah, yeah. I know there was a couple times I've been up here and there have been people looking for the application forms. There's a lot of interest in that. In the second one, the Sage Committee has released sponsorship of the Abington Farmers' Market. Now, I talked to, again, I talked to Lorraine, and there is a letter in here. They, the Sage Committee has run the Farmers' Market at Griffin's Dairy for a few years. It is very, very successful. The Farmers' Market is going to continue. It's going to be at the Senior Center, but it's not going to be under the direction of the Sage Committee. And the feeling was that they had gone away from their mission statement, and then after talking to Lorraine, I agreed about education. They felt they had gone about as far as they could with this. And there's other avenues they wanted to travel. So, that's just an announcement, that the Farmers' Market will continue, and it's going to be held now at the Senior Center. So, and again, the third one I have here is Abington Farmers' Market will open July 11th and run until September 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the home of the Senior Center on 441 Summer Street. And again, their meeting is May the 5th. If you'd like to attend that, I'm certain they would appreciate it and find out about the garden and if you had an interest in the Farmers' Market, so. Any other announcements from anybody? Kenny?
Can I just ask a question about that? Before, I was under the direction of the Sage Committee, and they held it at the Griffin's Farm. Now, it's under no one's direction, but it's at the Senior Center. Is there a class associated? They must have to open up the building for the restrooms, I'm assuming, or, and is there somebody that's going to be responsible up there? If something, if someone trips and falls on town property and no one's in charge? I mean, I just have concerns. Before, it was an Abington Board that was in charge of it. Now, who, who's, is there a dispute up there over, I got the wrong change? I mean, who's, who's in charge up there now?
Well, I don't have a 100% answer for you, but I, we did talk to the COA Director today, and the, at this point, they're not actually planning on utilizing the building. It's the grounds, because it's ample grounds, so that there aren't facilities, just like there's no facilities at the Griffin's Dairy site. So that really doesn't change. It's an exterior issue, not an interior issue. The other point is that the, I'm sorry, Suzanne DeJustburg is working to identify the, who the coordinator is, so that's very clear, who they're dealing with, for, obviously, for preparation and for cleanup. So that's a little bit of a work in progress, but, but that is, that concern is being dealt with.
I failed to, Kenny, to answer your question, there was another one in our packet, that the Abington Farmers' Market will be opened from July 11th to September 26th. We are excited to be our new home at the Center for Aging located at 441 Summer Street from 9 to 1 on Saturday. Please join us for the best locally grown vegetables, baked goods, gyms, jellies, pickles, and a variety of arts and crafts. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Shelley Bagain, and her phone number is 617-877-7836. Now, she is, Shelley is a member of the Sage Committee, but that, that's a good question. I don't know what that would happen. So, having said that, I had one, again, I had attended the Anything With a Plug thing, venue, down to the thing, and I was thoroughly impressed with the ladies. And I had asked Sue Brennan, who's the chairman of the Sage Committee, if she'd send me a note of the volunteers that were down there, because they were down there all day long. And so she did. It was a little bit on the late side, but the volunteers that served down there were Sue Brennan, Lorraine Ryerson, Terry Mays, Ginny Brown, Shelley Bagain, all Sage Committee members, and Marie Brown from the Council of the Aging, I fielded Brian Sullivan from the Food Pantry. And it was really quite an event, where they, they got three truckloads of, Anything With a Plug was a TV, refrigerator, and things that typically, if the town didn't provide it for people like that. Some of them would end up on the side of the street and stuff, so it was, it was great. And they also asked for donations for the food, local food pantry, and I'll tell you what, they got a ton of stuff. So it was a win-win situation for everybody, so. That's all we have on the public announcements. And as I understand it, we're, you know, a little bit of a delay. Is that, are we all set?
Everybody's here.
Okay. Okay. Tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring one of our students from Social Votec, Stephen Lee. And I don't, Stephen, I have a proclamation from the board here. I don't know if you'd like to say anything before, probably don't want to say anything. Maybe you want your mother or father to say something? I don't know. I mean, seriously, if you or your teachers, you're more than welcome to come up and say something.
Shouldn't we have Stephen come up to the microphone, so he'll be on TV, though, at least, so he gets his picture blasted on TV?
Stephen, you know what? When I was your age, I would have rather been not. But if you'd like to, we'd appreciate it, Stephen.
You don't have to say anything.
No, you don't have to. Just so everyone can see you. Can I, you want me to read this first?
Yes, please.
Proclamation first. Okay. Whereas Stephen Lee is a student leader among his classmates at Social Vocational Technical High School, whereas Stephen Lee was a gold medal winner in the Skills USA State Competition for Massachusetts in 2014, and placed 7th in the national competition, and will be competing again this year. Whereas Stephen Lee has demonstrated other interests and skills in his education, being an active member of the Drama Club, member of the National Honor Society, and a recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, in addition to his graphic communications accomplishments. Whereas Stephen Lee is a lifelong Boy Scout, currently holding the rank of Eagle Scout, and serving as Assistant Junior Scout Master, and intends to continue supporting and monitoring young scouts after high school. Whereas Stephen Lee has exhibited a passion for learning with a curious mind and an open attitude, and is looking forward to the diverse learning opportunities available in college environment, and will further his education in the field of graphic design at Mount Ida College. Whereas Stephen Lee has been named Outstanding Vocational Student of the Year of 2015 at the South Shore Vocational Technical High School. Now, therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the Town of Abington and its resident, recognize Stephen Lee for his outstanding achievements at the, at the South Shore Vocational Technical High School. Your dedication, hard work, and commitment are recognized by the Town of Abington with pride. Congratulations. Very well done. Is there anything you don't do?
My name is Deborah Collins, and I'm the Director of Vocational Education at South Shore Vocational Technical High School. And I just want to publicly say that Stephen is quite the asset at school. He is the go-to person in our graphic communication department, Culinary Arts was his sister. He is just, he's an all-around good kid, and we are very, very proud of him. Congratulations, Stephen.
Anything? Congratulations.
And Mr. Chairman, if I, just, we did get an email from Representative Deal's office that unfortunately, he intended on being here personally, but apparently, they caught up in a marathon debate session, and was, that he says is likely to last until midnight, so hopefully, we won't still be in session at that point ourselves. So, so the representative did take the time to send a note along, so he apologizes.
Thank you. And again, congratulations.
Well done, I say.
Action discussion items. Approval of April 6th, 2015, open session minutes. I'll make a motion to approve as written?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Same.
Four and, four and one abstention. Annual approval of underground storage license for 1432 Bedford Street has been put on hold. Annual renewal of appointments, we put that on hold. I'd like to discuss, I did have a discuss, discussion with the administration, and we would like to take, we sent them out, they sent them out to the, to the candidates or the nominees for reappointments, and the feeling was that the form we're sending out to them, being that their reappointments are not new, is somewhat, it asks a lot of questions that aren't really relevant. So I think, Dory and Rick, it would be fair to say, we would like to, to take a look at that form and perhaps get something that's a little bit more, you know, reasonable, understanding that they are volunteers, that this, we're using the same form for people that had an interest, you know, in looking for their first appointment. So, I don't know how the board felt about that.
Well, I think we should make the, make whatever we send out to them relevant to their position, what they're trying to do.
Well, the way we used to do it is, there was just a form, do you want to be considered for reappointment, yes or no?
Yeah.
If they already had their information when they first applied.
Right.
I think that's all that's necessary for reappointment.
I agree with that. I agree with that. So, and maybe, I mean, maybe the form that we're putting out, that is, it's on the website, right? Maybe we should look at that. Maybe, maybe there are too many questions we're asking to make people feel more comfortable.
Maybe that's why we're not getting anyone to...
Again, keeping in mind the difference between an initial application for appointment and a reappointment, right?
Right. So, it's all right with the board, I'll work with Rick and Dory, and maybe we could get something together for the next meeting. Having said that, though, we got to get the, out to the boards and commissions, and then have them back in a reasonable timeframe, so...
Well, why don't we have them send out a letter to the people that are on the boards now that are up for reappointment, and just say, yes or no, do you want it, at this point? Because we are up against a time constraint to appoint, and then we can look at it for future use.
What do you think of that?
Yeah, excellent. Yeah.
All right. I was just going to raise something else. One of the, the policy, we're reviewing another policy tonight, and I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at it, but in there is a section dealing with board appointments.
Yeah.
Which somewhat conflicts with the board appointment policy that we adopted separately from this. But some of the things in here, I think, are much better than what we actually had adopted.
All right.
And this was adopted, I don't know if, back in 2006, but, Board shall make its annual appointments at the first regular meeting in June. Appointments made at that meeting shall have terms beginning on July 1 and expiring on June 30, which makes sense, as the fiscal year, I think that, you know, I think it's kind of rushed for us to get an election done on Saturday, and then expect to come in here and make appointments on the following Monday.
Right.
So I think this timeline, I think, makes more sense to me, if that's maybe something you can look towards.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, I mean, well, I know for a fact that, like, some of these people aren't going to re-up. So, so what I'm saying is, like, Historical Commission, can we put out there, there are three openings in the Historical Commission, and it doesn't really matter who's getting put up for a reappointment, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, people don't know that there might be positions available, because we may not vote to reappoint some, some of these boards, and some people may not want to get, get on this. Like, example, there's five people on the Cultural Council up for reappointments. Suppose we get answers back from two of them, and then we have, we get a delay, we have to put it back out there and publicize it. Shouldn't we put on there, there's five openings on the Cultural Council. If you're interested, please send us your, your information.
Well, do we know? Has anyone responded saying they don't want to be reappointed?
But that doesn't matter, does it? And we have, we have five appointments.
Right.
We have, on the conservation, we may have three openings.
Well, I think the theory, we wanted people to apply, not feeling that anybody, including us, had a lifelong position on any board or commission.
That would take care of it.
Yeah, so you could have, you say you could have 10 people applying for the Cultural Council. You know, you could have more than that. Not likely to happen, but again, I think we felt that we wanted to encourage people to step up.
Exactly. And they may, and it may come to, there are no openings on the cultural, however, you did apply, you know, would like to get involved on this committee.
Correct. That's correct.
It'd be great, because people, a lot of people just want to be involved. It doesn't matter, you know, they don't have a specific agenda.
Right, right. And, okay, so that's...
I would just like a blanket thing on the website, or a press release that says, July 1st, we're going to be appointing, yes, three zone, is this, I don't know how many the openings are out on these boards. I think that on the Historical Commission, there's going to be, there may be three openings on the Historical Commission, and someone's a reappointment, but if they don't reappoint, so you'll have two or three, whatever. But I mean, just so people know what's out there and is available, and that we do do our job, and every year, we look at these things, and we go through them and appoint. You know, I don't want, you hear a lot of, it's hidden, I didn't know there was going to be an opening. Well, you know, there is, there's a possibility you could be on a board if you wanted to.
Right, absolutely. I mean, that, that was the whole theory behind it. And we are, Maureen and I have had a meeting, we're going to bring, we're trying to get that website up to, we want it not good, we want the best that we can get out of it. So that's going to be work in progress. We have to deal with that. So I guess from here, what I heard was, we're going to send out a letter of reappointment, and to Kenny's idea, can you say that again, Ken? We're going to...
Get it up on the website.
Yeah, Cultural Council is five, there's going to be five people being up for, there's going to be five openings on July 1, for July 1st.
Right.
Some may be applying for reappointment, some may, but there's five openings.
There's five openings, no matter how you look at it, yeah. So these are all the openings that we'll be reappoint, appointing?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep, and, and...
So there's one, two, three, four, five on Sage Committee?
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe Mike wants to, maybe Mike wants to read just each one that's available, Mike, just so people listening tonight are aware of what's out there.
Okay, so we'd have two, four, five on the Cultural Council, one on the Cable Advisory. There's three vacancies. I don't, there's a question, I don't know if that's a committee we want to...
Well, I know, Mr. Chairman, it was in place when we were, actually had the license agreement, but the license agreement is 10 years, so we, you know, we had it in place for that reason. Currently, there's nobody on it, because the license isn't up, so...
So, I mean, should we eliminate that? We could always reestablish it, instead of looking for people and...
Yeah.
I don't know what the board feels.
So how does the cable work now?
Abington Cam, right?
Yeah, it's a non-profit.
A non-profit.
Yep, yep.
So, we don't have an advisory cable?
Yeah, the advisory board is generally in place when you're negotiating, renewing a contract with the, with the provider, but other than that, the private nonprofit runs it on a regular basis.
You might want to check with the current members, just to see if there is anything that they're doing.
I don't think there are any current members, are there?
I think there are. Isn't, Mr. DeCarlo was on there.
All right, why don't we do that, then? We'll find out about, and then we can, we could, I think we'd have to vote to, like that.
Abington Cam.
Yeah, but I think, I think he's on cable, I think so.
I'll check in.
Check with him.
Conservation Commission, I know, there's going to be two openings on Conservation Commission. Council of the Arts, there's three people on there, Council of the Aging, I'm sorry. And again, we don't know, we haven't received any notification that they don't want to be on there yet.
On Council on Aging, we received one yes, and that was it, on Council on Aging.
Okay. Historical Commission, we have one, did Robin say she was resigning, or?
Yeah, she's...
Okay, so we're going to have one opening for sure on the Historical Commission. On the Housing Partnership, we're going to have one opening. Bruce Hughes has sent, has indicated he doesn't want to, no longer be on that.
Right.
Okay. And then Sage, we have all the Sage members on there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't want to serve in the committee.
Right, we had, did have four responses in the affirmative, and one in the negative.
Okay, so we definitely have one.
Yep.
One there. And Zoning Board of Appeals, there's three. I don't think so. All right.
That's a question on that? Didn't Park and Rec have a commission? I think I saw on the ballot, there was no one running.
But that would be...
That's a separate thing, though. Yeah, that's going to be a separate...
That's a separate thing, because that's an elected position.
But I was going to bring, but now's a good time to bring that sort of stuff up.
Yeah.
If we can, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
We received an email today, there's going to be an opening on the School Committee.
Correct.
And I believe that, I spoke earlier...
Is there an opening on the Water?
Yeah, there'll be an opening on the Water, without stepping up. So I don't know if we have to schedule a joint meeting with those boards, and we want to get it out there and get some good candidates for these positions.
Right. Now, I haven't seen the town clerk in attendance. Did, was there any write-ins on the Park and Rec?
Yes.
Okay, so that, we wouldn't have to fill that, I assume? Okay.
So that's covered? I'm sorry.
How about the Trustee Veterans Memorial as well?
Yeah.
That's taken care of, too?
Good. And then, so we'd have to, that's always been a problem, too. Do we have to receive notification from, like, the Water Board, or?
Yeah, that's all by charter.
On the board itself, to you.
So, and the School Committee would have to receive a notification from the School Committee, and then, then the clock would...
That's right.
I kind of, I kind of like...
Can we vote contingent upon you receiving the letter? Because we know the letter's going to be coming.
It'll be outside of the charter, that's the only thing.
We have to wait for the next meeting till you get to read the letter? I think the charter controls what you, what the process is.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dory, but once you received a notification from the Water Board or the School, you can post it.
But that's where you post it, and then the clock starts ticking.
So we could, we could start the clock there.
Yep.
But letting the general public know tonight that there will be an opening on the School Board, and there will be an opening on the Water Commission, so...
Well, doesn't the email that she sent today saying she will not accept the position on the School Committee?
Well, she resigned her seat.
She's not accepting.
She's not accepting. She was voted in on Saturday, and she will not accept the vote. So can't we just take that and start advertising?
Well, I don't know if there were any other write-ins who would be in line potentially to accept or not accept, so I, I don't know. We can take it upon ourselves in the next day or two to get confirmation from the School Committee, from the School Administration.
I just think we should do it as quickly as possible, since, you know, we just had the election, we want these people on the boards as quick as possible.
They're going to make their announcement tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what the, if, what the charter says is, the remaining members shall forthwith give notice of the existence of any such vacancy to the board's room.
to accept or not accept, so I, I don't know. We can take it upon ourselves in the next day or two to get confirmation from the school committee, from the school administration.
I just think we should do it as quickly as possible, since, you know, we just had the election, we want these people on the boards as quick as possible.
Yeah, that's what the, if, what the charter says is, the remaining members shall forthwith give notice of the existence of any such vacancy to the board's, so we can't really do anything until we get a notice from each particular board.
The water board, the water commission.
But that doesn't mean that people can't be aware that there are going to be openings coming, yeah.
Right, I think that was.
That term for the school committee, it's a two-year term, but it would only be till next year, right, it would be one year if filled?
Have to, you'd have to run again.
All right, okay.
All right.
Does that work the same for the water commission?
Yep.
Yes.
That, that position is up for reelection next year, anyway.
That'll work out, good, all right, any further comments on that? Uh, review.
If I could just apologize, Mr. Chairman, none of us, four and five look remarkably similar, and, uh, that's because they are, so, a little bit of, uh.
Okay, so we'll do, excuse me, we'll do four and five together, I take it, how do you want to handle that, you want, you want to go over them, or?
I'll, I'll be happy to just briefly, with, with regard to the budget discussion, um, you.
Just, just let me interrupt one second, Alex, we'll read these once, and then before town meeting at some point, we'll take a, a position on it, you know, go back and take a position on it, so I'm sorry, Rick.
Now, is there negotiation now, can, you know, if we see something we don't like, what do we do about that?
For the budget or for the articles?
For the budget.
For the budget.
Yeah, this is, I, the process is still going on, what I, what I have, and I've provided to the board is an update to date, and, um, I know, Mr. Burbine has posed some questions, and, um, and we'll be following up in the next day or two, and distribute that to everybody, and obviously, working with the finance committee on a weekly basis here.
Is this the finance committee's final?
No.
No.
This is, basically, the town manager proposal is what exists, and eventually, the, the finance committee will be making a recommendation, um, but some of, some of the factors, for instance, the vote this past weekend, we got to the, the capital exclusion impacts that, so there's been a lot of factors, just in the last two weeks, that, that have an impact on the budget process, so, um, and, so rather than give you bad information, I know some of the questions posed by Andy, I'm sure everybody's, are relevant, if you look through the budget document, you see some of the proposed increases, some of those are, the various reasons, um, I obviously want to explain on a, you know, line-by-line basis, for, you know, any questions, so as of right now, to the extent that the board members do look through each individual line items, and pose questions individually, and then I can be happy to prepare an encompassing analysis for, for the board members, so, and again, finance committee's meeting Wednesday night, I'll be, I'll continue to meet with them on a weekly basis, too, so, um, so there's nothing cast in stone, it's just, at some point, the, the selectmen and the finance committee will be presumably making some recommendations.
And the town meeting is June 6th, so what is the deadline for us to approve those?
Well, the warrant needs to be approved by the last week of May, your meeting, it's regularly scheduled meeting of May 18th, fits well within that deadline, and the town meeting date is set for the June 8th.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can go through any items, but I think it's probably more fair that everybody, particularly Alex, has a chance to read what I.
Right.
Produced last week. As far as the warrant itself, the, um, there's, there's a special town meeting draft, and an annual town meeting draft, um, and again, you probably, I don't know how much time you want to spend on it tonight, but I assume you want to go through the articles, and, and there is one addition, based upon the fact that the capital exclusion did pass, you may recall that in March, um, I notified the board that if it did pass, that town council has informed us that the borrowing authorization for the ladder truck needs to be amended to a raise and appropriate, that was to accommodate the capital exclusion, so we would be adding that to the annual town meeting warrant also.
Right.
And at the same time, rescinding last year's article, so we don't have both, we don't have the ability to buy two ladder trucks, that is, that was never the intent.
So one article would be to rescind, and one would be to change the language?
Right, or, I would assume, with some help from our lawyers, we can make that all one article, so, to reduce the confusion.
Good.
And I, again, I don't know if you want to go through each article individually.
You know what I'd suggest, if it's up to the committee, is, um, could you just, you don't have to read the article, but just say, like, the first article, Article 1 is a $46,000 for sick leave buyback, Article 2, and just, unless, what's up to the board?
That's fine, I think.
Got it right, Rick?
Yep, let me just get to, uh. Right, and I don't know what comments you want, if you just want to go through them, or, if you, um, one next.
If there's questions, we could stop, and I don't anticipate there being a lot, so.
And obviously, you'll have, before the time comes, you'll have the various department heads in to, you know, provide any input that you would require, too, so, but the, if you'd like, I can just run through them quickly for the, for the board, Article 1, as mentioned, is a sick leave and vacation buyback for employees, $46,000 for long-term employees, um, Article 2 is rescinding $475,000 vote bond authorization from 2012, a FROlio feasibility study.
Is that money that we don't need?
That is correct.
Wow, but, we just don't, I, I think that's money we didn't borrow.
You, that is correct, yes.
Just, not available. Throwing the availability to borrow it again.
Article, Article 3 is of a similar vein, rescinding prior bond authorizations that are not necessary or required, you can see that a treasure collector has been beating up departments to try and clean up his books in preparation for the largest borrow in the town's history, coming up soon, so, um, so that's what a lot of these are dedicated to, um, I'm sorry, where did my other page go, yeah? I do, okay, Article 5 is a transferring money from a water, undesigned fund balance, $50,000, to purpose of purchasing and installing water meters, that's an ongoing process, ongoing capital process, um, Article 6 is also by the water commissioners, to transfer the same $50,000 from the water undesigned fund balance, for the purpose of upgrading the IT servers and billing software, um, and that is, one of the things that you may not know, or some of you may know, is that the systems that Abington and Rockland currently use are not the same, so they're trying to make that, unify that between the towns. Article 7 is a request for the water commission for $70,000 to fund the pension costs assessed to the town of Rockland by the Pumfins County Retirement Association, this is the long-term, well, I guess, moderate-term effort to fully fund the pension system, and these are the obligations that the, the water commission is required to come up with for both towns.
Now, this says fiscal year 2010, is that, are they behind, or is that the way it works?
Well, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a.
I mean, are we, and next year, we're going to see 2011s, or, are they, I mean?
There wasn't, there was an end point, and.
There was an end point, yeah.
I thought, I thought we were done.
Three, uh, three years, is this the second or third year?
This could be the third year.
I think this is the third year of the three-year, three-year catch jump.
I believe it's, uh, last year.
Because our, the town's own pension assessment this year is up again significantly, but it's again, the third year of a three-year process of taking a significant hit, unfortunately. Article 8 is a request for $5,000 for flag day weekend celebration expenses, this may or may not be necessary.
Who put that article in?
This was actually recommended to us, um, by Doug Ulwick, who is informally coordinating those, those efforts, and there is, so this may not be necessary, but he did request that we at least try and reserve some funds if necessary, um, there's a lot of private interests that are providing money, et cetera, as we understand it, does that sound about right?
That's exactly right.
All right, um, it would be nice if we don't need this, but that's.
And it's really for the rededication of the, the memorial, right?
Exactly.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you for adding that, Article 9 is by the fire chief to transfer $30,000 from the ambulance enterprise fund.
Does he have a deficit in his budget?
To the, uh, yeah, there's this, in, we're hoping that's not the case, but it's going to be very close, so he's hoping that, that, he's had a lot of overtime this year, particularly with filling some of the vacancies, and some injuries, but, um, the hope is that it's not necessary. And Article 10 is the, a general article that would provide the opportunity to move money among, with, between line items, um, that menu has not been produced yet, obviously, it's a little premature, so, end-of-year transfers.
Just a question, I mean, some of these show their funding sources, but at some point, like, the, um, that would have to be identified, the funding sources for.
Yes, yes, it's, uh, yeah, it's pre, yeah, we, we're not even close to motions yet, not even close, yeah.
Just stating the fact that, yeah, we can put this on, we just have to make sure.
Once a finance committee chair, always a finance committee chair.
That's right. It was in Andy. You're right, thank you.
Okay, and the annual town meeting warrant, um, Article 1 is, is essentially the budget article, which we will get to in time, Article 2 is the article that fixes the salaries of, um, I'm sorry, elected official salaries, and town clerk salary is the only one that's still elected full-time, Article 3 is.
Article 2, what increase is that, what percentage increase is that?
That's a 3%, I believe was requested by the town clerk.
Okay.
Article 3 is the, is recommending, or requesting $293,000 and change for what amounts to a capital plan, and as you can see, the first three of those would be general fund expenditures, the fourth, the sewer department, the $60,000 would be from the sewer undesigned fund balance. And again, these are just articles, the idea is that these would be funded in some capacity through free cash, if available, when the time comes, Article 4 is the reauthorization of the existing revolving funds.
Question, has there been any change in the limits, or are we sticking with?
Some of the limits have been reduced.
Or reduced?
More accurately, a refund.
So this year, they've been reduced?
They have been.
Yeah, just, the Department of Reverend recommended that if we didn't reach a certain percentage on some of those, that we should reduce them, and it happened in a couple years, so.
Yeah, but there's, there's no, uh, there's no, yeah, no opposition, no concern that these aren't suitable limits, though, correct?
Okay, good, that's, so the department heads are aware?
Yes, Article 9, uh, 5 is, is the personnel bylaw that I'm recommending, which I know I distributed to the board at this point several months ago, and did get a little bit of feedback, um, the key issue here is now that there's effectively only a handful of non-union employees that we don't need a 35-page bylaw, so this more or less authorizes the town manager and the selectmen of promulgate regulations for non-union personnel.
Question, how many, how many would this cover, how many employees would this cover?
You would ask me that right now.
No, you can, if you don't know off the top of your head.
I will, I will, I will give you a bad answer if I try right now, but I will, I will get the board any answer on that in the next couple of days.
The other question I had, are you conducting a salary survey?
We have funds available to conduct a salary survey, um, one of the issues, without getting into it too deeply, is that until the collective bargaining situation culminates, I've been hesitant to do that, um, it's, in some ways, one of the, well, like I say, should be, to me, that comes after solidification of that, although, the point is valid in that there are a few full-time positions, you know, our financial staff that, that would fall under that, but they're not in a collective bargaining unit, so, um, so if, again, if anybody has comments particularly on this, I know I sent it out a couple of months ago, it did get some feedback earlier on, so. Am I putting this in the appropriate pile door? Article 6 is by the charter review committee that requests adoption of their recommended proposals.
Rick, how, how, was that going to be a separate document?
It will be, yes, it will be done as a separate document, and as you also know, it has to be, will be on the annual ballot, at the ballot next year, for, for adoption, if it gets beyond this point. Article 7 is by petition to adopt the Community Preservation Act. Article 8 is a request by the fire chief to replace, is, the cruiser of the deputy chief, $42,000. Article 9 is to transfer $15,000 from the enterprise ambulance, I'm sorry, ambulance enterprise fund, um, to replace and relocate a municipal fire alarm antenna down at the central station.
Can I ask about eight, eight and nine, are they, um, are they in the capital plan, or is it?
They, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to, these would, um, these are being proposed by the fire chief to be amortized from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, not from the general fund.
Well, it says raise and appropriate or transfer.
Yes, so that, that's what he's conceiving right this moment, is that they would be purchased over a period of time, three to five years, from, from the ambulance receipts reserved account.
I thought the ambulance reserve fund was going to be used to pay for the new firemen when they come off.
Well, part of it will, I mean, it's, it's a substantial amount of funds that that receives every year.
How much does that bring in, a year?
I'd have to get you an answer, Alex, than, rather than give you a bad one here tonight.
I plan on running two full-time ambulances to bring it up.
Yeah, let me.
Can you, this is going to sound like, does that, can that fund go from year to year, and increase every year, does that have to be spent down?
No, it can be, it does not have to be spent down, it's not a revolving fund with a limitation, it's a receipts reserved for appropriation account, um, so it can build to any amount, really, but, but every.
I just hate to spend it, spend it down, and then, when time comes to fund these new firemen, when we're, it's our dime that we don't have the money to do it, that's all.
That's, the fire chief is very, very aware of that, as well as, yeah, so.
I like sitting down here.
I am, I am keeping a list of questions, don't worry, I will, we'll get those back to people, okay, Article 10 would be a sick leave buyback in the, within the fire department for a retiree. Article 11 is by petition for the raise and appropriate or transfer for health imperatives, violence, intervention, and prevention programs, formerly A New Day, as some of you are familiar with that, with that organization, and that's for services to provide, provided to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence. Article 12 is, well, actually, the next several are by the water commission, 12 through 21, I should ask Mr. Bazanson to explain these, so, keep the heat off me here a little bit.
Ask Mr. Kelly.
Article 12 is $4,230 for sick leave buyback from a retiree within the department.
But none of these articles are raised and appropriate?
Correct, these are, would all be from the water undesigned fund balance, correct. Article 13 is water commissioners, $25,000 for developing a computer model of the, of the system to allow to track system inadequacies, inadequacies, and water quality projections. Article 14 is $30,000 by, from the water undesigned fund balance, for the purpose of replacing the filter media at the Myers Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Article 15 is by the water commission to transfer $10,000 for the purpose of continuing the annual leak detection program. Article 16 is to transfer 10,000, again, by the, by the water commission, to continuing the survey and testing in accordance with the, required by the state, um, I'm sorry, I lost track here.
Article 16 doesn't say where you're going to transfer it from, though? I'm just wondering if it should say water fund balance, or the other, undesigned, it doesn't say where it's coming from.
We can, we can amend that.
Yep.
I mean, it could be in the motion, but it's better if it's, it's right in the article, I'm sure that was the intent, anyway, obviously.
And just while we're picking on, it's here. Article, uh, let's see, Article 14, 15, 17, 18, and 19 say water fund balance, and then the others say water undesigned fund balance, so just for consistency, if it's the same.
Is it two separate, is it two separate accounts, though?
No, it is the same.
It's the same one, because the sewer has, has two different accounts.
It is the same.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we will update those.
And then, just a question, and you probably don't know the answer to this, but could you get us a total of what is actually in that water undesigned fund balance?
Sure. Okay, I think I was on Article 18, again, from the water, um, no, I believe I passed that, $30,000 for redevelopment of sludge lagoons at the Myers Ave Water Treatment Plant, to allow for new chemical treatment into the lagoons. Article 19 is by the water, by the water commission, 20, to transfer $25,000, the purpose of upgrading the wellhouse at the Great Sandy Bottom Water Treatment Plant, and as they listed, that's a safety issue currently. Article 20 by the water commission is to transfer $70,000 to purchase, replace, to replace two pickup trucks. Article 21 by the water commission is to raise and appropriate 2 million, I'm sorry, $2 million, which would obviously be amortized, um, to, to replace water mains, and to allow upgrades to the system, that's not identified yet exactly what those upgrades are, I don't know if.
But that raise and appropriate, that, we're coming off another debt, so, in reality, it's just going to continue the same payments for that $2 million.
So it's not, it won't affect the rates?
Right.
Okay.
Four of the articles, 15, 16, 20, 21, they don't say from like amount with Rockland, I'm just wondering, like, 15 is for leak detection, does that mean the leak detection's only going to be happening in Abington, 16, the same thing, the survey, does that mean it's only happening in Abington and not Rockland, and like, 20 is for two vehicles, that, I think it's a joint waterworks, you would think that, so they should probably both say.
We'll double, we'll verify that.
I'm not sure why it says like that, because it certainly shouldn't be $140,000 for two pickup trucks.
Right, okay, good.
We will verify that.
They actually be coming out, there are. They actually be coming out of, there are two sets of books, there's actually three sets of books, Abington, Rockland, and joint, so maybe Abington is paying it out of.
I can see, I can see a leak detection if that's happened exclusively at Abington, but the vehicles, you would think, would be a joint purchase, but.
So Dan would have to explain this.
I'm sorry, I think article 22 is a, by the, by the school committee, $14,000 for student transportation services for attending out-of-district vocational schools. Article 23 is to see if the town will vote to have the certain deed parcels, I don't want to screw that name up too badly, P-O-H-O-R-E-C-K-Y, for those at home. And lieu of foreclosure, and I do have some information from the treasurer collective for the board regarding that, that question, as to whether or not that's something that's its, he's recommending it only because he believes those are going to be in foreclosure, and the time and expense it takes to take those through that process would seem to be unnecessary, if we can accept it in another format that he's recommending, so.
Can you just check the wording on that? It seems as though there might be a word or two missing, in the way that is.
Yeah, vote to have, to have perreki.
Yeah, now.
Bay, or something's missing there.
And keep, keep in mind that this will, this has not been reviewed by town council yet either, so that.
Well, if we can fix a couple of words and get it knocked off our bill from town council, we should be doing that now.
As long as you don't bill us, Ken, that's all. Article 24, I would consider a work in progress in the current format. As you know, right now, there are non-union positions that used to be, I think, under an article 3A back not so many years ago, that would be funded through an article, so this number, $32,000, is projected on a 4% increase, but that's, this is, I'd say, still in development. But presumably, it's an article that allows for a non-union increase if that's, if so approved by the town, if recommended in advance first by, by the town, so, by the Selectment and Finance Committee. In fact, it might not be a bad idea to put that back up, I believe it used to be called Article 3A, 2A, so maybe, that might be a, something worth considering. Article 25 is by the planning board to increase their revolving fund from 35 to 45,000. And article 26, by the planning board, would be to accept Mass General Law Chapter 41, 81U, which has to do with planning board bond requirements. Article 27 by the planning board would be to authorize them to expend the surety that's being held on Mayflower Avenue to make that comply with the planning board regulations.
With Mayflower Avenue, you know?
I believe that's off Summer Street, is that, is that the one off Summer Street?
I think it's up, yeah, towards, towards what one is it?
Near the Rockland line?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Part of it's actually in Rockland, I think, some of the way.
Article 28 is by the, the planning board, and it is their, I'm sorry, article 28 is the sign bylaw, new sign bylaw, being recommended by the planning board.
Do we get like a, we need a digest version of that at some point, just so we?
I spoke to Wayne about, he's willing to come in.
That's a good idea, yeah.
And exactly go through some of this rationale behind, and what the changes are actually are, so.
If we're meeting, if the planning board's meeting is Monday night, maybe we can meet early with them and just go, you want to do it at a later point, maybe the Hensville?
Makes no difference to me, it's, it's up to.
The sign bylaw, actually, is by the zoning board, if you look at.
I'm sorry, zoning board of appeals, I'm sorry, yeah.
Planning board has a lot of changes.
That brings up another point, though, if we're going to meet with some of these department heads, and we only have two meetings before we should accept this budget, are we going to have to have other meetings?
Yep.
Or are we going to be able to fit them all in?
Well, I guess that's a, that's a, I don't have an answer to that, that's a question.
No, I think, I think we absolutely have to.
Generally, you would obviously meet with proponents of articles, I believe.
Right, and I think, I think we should have a special meeting just to do that. We're also supposed to, I think, by bylaw, meet with the finance committee? Joint meeting with the finance committee? So, yeah, I think, especially in the proponents part, and maybe we could schedule Wayne or whatever.
Maybe schedule a meeting just to deal with town meeting issues, the warrants in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think we should.
Do it all together.
I don't know what would, I mean, it doesn't, for me, it doesn't have to be on a Monday night, it's whatever's, whatever's good.
I found that it worked best when we had the finance committee's recommendations, looked at them, and then if we had problems, then we met with them and tried to battle it out, not, not battle it out, but work it out, I should say, you know, but I mean, there may not be enough time to do that, I don't know when their recommendations.
I think, I think that's going to be the problem, Ken, it's just, we're not, we're going to, especially with some of these zoning, and you'd like to have a little bit of a, like you said, a red digest.
Well, I was talking just getting the budget up, but as far as the articles, oh, we can do that, you know, sooner rather than later.
Well, I'm meeting with the finance committee Wednesday, so I can discuss with them maybe a schedule for a joint meeting, what works best.
All right, then, we'll send.
In the meantime, to the extent that's, board members have schedule issues in the next, you know, 45 days, you know, if people are out of town for a week or two, if you could just let us know, so we can.
Right, and Alex, you said you were going on four.
I'm away tomorrow until next Tuesday.
That's Memorial Day, so that's a holiday.
We'll look at that.
So we're meeting right now, we're meeting on the 4th and the 18th, those are our two regularly scheduled meetings.
Your 4/11 and 18?
Right, that's three.
Your 4/11, so we meet three Mondays in a row?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
You can't be to the 4th, right?
No, I won't be on the 4th, but I'll be at the 11th and 18th.
Make the 11th the town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I think they'll have their recommendations finalized by then, if they have to.
We may not, we may not need to meet on the 4th, we don't really have much.
So the 11th could, 11th would sound to be a, the 11th sounds like a good.
11 and 18 sound good.
11 and 18.
This is something the board wants to bring up for the next, next Monday.
Well, especially in light of the fact that the planning board is, again, having, hosting their meeting with the Route 18 Butters and interested businesses, so I know, there's been an expression, I, some members, they'd like to be there, too, and I know I'd like to be there, so.
You're going to meet in this room, I imagine.
Yes, so. But we can, we'll, we'll plan on the 11th and 18th, then.
Okay.
Unless we hear, otherwise. All right.
Motion to, oh, sorry.
I'm not going to get in the way of that.
I know you won't.
The next, I'm sorry, the next.
Just on the 11th, we'll get a hold of, I think, in talking to Wayne, and maybe I got upset, but he felt that some of the zoning articles, he would be able to explain, too, but can we check it out with him, and if not, we'll have the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ian Wayne, because he was more than willing, understanding, you know, the complexity and how much information was there.
Sure.
He might even have some hot dogs left over from the election.
We might want to go with the 11th and rather than the 18th.
So do we know exactly who we're going to ask to come in on the 11th and the 18th? Like, do we want the water commissioners come in, or fire?
I'd just as soon have them all, yeah.
Articles on the 11th, articles on the 18th.
We're not going to waste their time.
Yeah.
We just had a few questions for, we had some questions for water, no doubt, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the more, might be a long night, but the more we can do, the better, especially with, again, zoning, ZBA, and water, and.
Yeah, they're tough, there's a lot in here.
Just looking at this, it's up to you, of course, to the chairman, but it doesn't look like the petitioners, probably don't need them to come in, though, though one of them, yeah, I think you do want.
I think there's.
Community preservation.
Yeah, you definitely do, so.
The other one is.
We want to schedule him that night, because that would make for a long meeting, I don't know how much other work we have in front of us.
Yeah, that would be just articles that night, the 11th, because it would be an additional meeting.
Yeah, so I think you were still saying the 4th would be a regular business meeting, right? If you need to.
Yeah, the 4th is only next week.
Right, so you may not need it.
Yeah, if you want to.
But if you want to keep the 11th just.
Yeah.
You might want to.
Concentrated with this stuff.
Right, in fact, before you, during tonight, that might be a decision you want to make on next week, because I know that, like I say, because the planning board meeting is important, too, I know a lot of people, whether you want to, you know, plan on meeting jointly with them, or just, you know, a certain selectmen want to be there as individual, however you want to do it, but it might be good to make that decision at some point, or you could just leave it to the discretion of the chair as usual, and let it go.
We'll figure it out, whatever you know. I mean, if we need meeting on the 4th, it wouldn't be.
Okay, I'm sorry, we were, I think we were on article 29.
Yes.
2930, we're all into zoning bylaws, 31, 32, 33. All the way up, actually, I'm going to go out on a limb and guess you don't want me to go through all these individually.
What's that?
All these articles that zoning articles.
Not sure it's necessary if we're going to get them in here.
If they read these at town meeting, we're probably going to need two nights just to.
But the zoning articles go up to article, I'm sorry.
37.
36.
Yeah, through.
Yeah, 37 is the sole.
And then article 38 is a generic article to fund any collective bargaining agreements that may be ready and informed to be adopted by the selectmen and ultimately recommended to the town meeting, whether or not that's the case is still.
Is 39 something we can actually do?
Article 39 is by petition, I'm sorry, you mean legally?
Yeah, can we, can we vote to discontinue the use of common court standards?
I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to play one, but I don't, I believe, that's a question I think that's best for the school committee, the school superintendent, whether or not a vote of the town carries any legal weight, or if it's more of a recommendation.
Right, so is it, is it a legal question, that it can be done at all, or is it a question that it's the school board's decision, rather than us?
I think the school board.
Then we'd want them in here, too, wouldn't we?
Well, I thought we were going to get an opinion on.
Well, again, this is, this still will, hasn't been to council yet for a legal review, it may very well be, we may be informed that the question is not in, even if adopted, doesn't have any legal weight, I don't know.
We're governed by, by, by law to accept the petition article and not throw it out.
Wow.
But if it's not, you know, you know, if it's not.
It's not legal.
Legal, then it's up to the moderator at that point to throw it out, but we do need the legal opinions before we.
We should still ask the petitioner to come in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Be happy to, yeah. Okay, so that's the basis, and again, there's the one other article that, that we will have to write, as I mentioned, just to, the technical one regarding the ladder truck, now that it's in the form of a capital exclusion, so.
Mr. Chairman, could, could we possibly get, unless you want to do it, but the town manager, just to explain on TV what the vote actually did on, believe it or not, I actually forgot about the question until I was getting ready to leave.
I think a lot of us did.
It was a lot, no, it was down the bottom, and it wasn't a lot of publicity about it, I mean, we, we talked about it at our meetings, and it was talked about at that town meeting, but really, there was no press on it at all, and, and I don't want people to think anybody was being sneaky at all, because it's scary when you see override, and, you know, dead exclusion, all that sort of words, so maybe, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, we should maybe talk briefly about it, I know I don't want to waste time, but, because we have talked about it at the meeting.
No, no, Rick, you want to hear that?
I'll do my best to give a brief update, or my recollection, going back a little over a year, as you, I believe the selectmen allowed for a late article by the fire chief to purchase a ladder truck, to borrow, to purchase a ladder truck, because he had just received information that his, the vehicle wasn't going to be certified for use anymore because of structural flaws. That was, so there was, there was, there really wasn't any other option, other than to put an article on, you know, to borrow the funds, because it wasn't time to do, to create any other funding opportunity through a debt exclusion or capital exclusion, so the board allowed that, the fire chief did sponsor the article, it was approved by the town meeting to borrow, allow the treasurer to borrow up to 1.2 million dollars to purchase and equip a new aerial truck. Subsequent to that, the board of selectmen had conversations, and even at the time, the fire chief brought that to the board, I know there were conversations about what funding opportunities we could create, and subsequent to the town meeting vote, the board of selectmen met, I believe, at least on two, two occasions, and discussed whether you might prefer a capital or a debt exclusion to help offset the cost of the debt, which we're going to, which we were going to have to absorb into the operating budget, if it wasn't excluded in some fashion. The board of selectmen decided to put forth a ballot question for a capital exclusion, which would raise the funds, the 1.2 million dollars for the new vehicle in one year, as opposed to amortize that over 10 years. And, again, I don't want to represent the board's opinions, per se, but I think the intent was to try and get the cost of that vehicle off the town's books before the debt exclusion for the new school facility hits the, hits the tax roll, so to speak, so. So there was certainly no intent to, in any way, buy two vehicles, it was just a funding, so, a way to fund the vehicle that was approved at last year's town meeting. It was a little bit awkward, because of the emergency nature of, of the fact that the chief, the lateness of him receiving his, the news regarding the suitability of the vehicle, it didn't allow the town to get a vote in advance at the ballot box for a capital or debt exclusion, so it was a little bit awkward, no doubt about it. One of the issues that was raised by people internally was, well, how do we get the word out to the public what this means, and after talking to Lauren Goldberg at Coleman and Page, the law is very onerous on, on obviously using public resources to, in any way, make it look like the, there's a, an effort to influence a vote of the public, so, for instance, we, it would not have even been appropriate to print up, you know, 1,000 one-page flyers, information bullet flyers to, you know, to have available for, at the ballot box, I mean, it's that stringent, and with, with good reason, I'm not suggesting it's not good. So the, generally what happens in a case like this, where there's, there's usually a natural proponent of a capital or a debt exclusion, whether it's a, you know, and there would be, whether it's the parent group of some sort, a sports group, or a PTO, if it's a school issue, that has every ability and legal right to raise funds and effectively mount a campaign and spend funds to influence the public and educate the public, that's not, there wasn't that natural proponent here, and the ability of the board members, and certainly the administration of the town, to, to do anything that would appear to be influencing the vote, would have been inappropriate, so it was a little bit of an awkward situation, so, but we assure people, we have not bought two trucks, and that was never the intent, it was just an effort to find a financing source that did not create an undue hardship on the operating budget.
I think the town made a good decision to.
No, I, I, I think that, you know, going back to the, the question, I think the average cost per household was a little over $200 for a one-time capital exclusion, and, again, that will be gone before the bulk of the school debt exclusion hits, hits people's tax, tax bills, so that's, that's good, so.
We, we did debate this twice, I think, publicly.
You did, yes, yeah.
And there was, there was an emergency situation, we were relying on mutual aid, and had we gone for the debt exclusion last year, it would have brought us into a special town election, so it was, it was a conscious decision that we made that, knowing first hand, we also, we also wanted to stay away from the stabilization fund because of the effect it could possibly have on our bond rating at this point in time where we're borrowing, you know, a lot of money.
Right.
So another half a percent, a third of a percent would be a lot, so, yeah, we, it was definitely talked about, and we went over all the, all the different ways, so.
But it is, it's. Right, but it is, it's a little more complicated than most capital or debt exclusion questions, just because of the way it all came about, which wasn't the fire chief's fault, so to speak, or anybody else's, it was just.
It was the town manager's fault.
Only when things go wrong, Mr. Chairman.
Just like at home.
Can I ask, with regard, do we, do we have an ETA on the delivery of said fire truck?
Said fire truck should be delivered very early July, originally, it was thought that June would be the date, but July is where it seems to be moving at this point.
And the final cost is not the 1.2, I believe, right, it's, it's a little less than the 1.2?
Yeah, it's close to it, but it is a little bit, I believe 1,168,000 and change was the last estimates from the fire chief, so.
What's that?
Yep.
Okay, so, discussion of 2015 budget, we did that, board of selectmen policy review, Alex, it's up to you, you're probably not ready for this, and we certainly can delay it, if you want to.
Yeah, I haven't really looked it over.
That's fine, that's all right with the rest.
I have some edits, too, that maybe I can send to you.
Debbie, you want to give them to me now, or after the meeting, or?
I'll email them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Town manager's report.
I'll skip number one, Mr. Chairman, on the budget process.
Okay.
Number two, Griffins Dareas, I'm sure you're all aware, the house in the barn are now, have been demolished, and, as it appears, they have met the requirements of the bid spec, and the good news is, is that there's still about $13,000 left in the, the article appropriation for that, and I actually noticed there's some grass coming up today, so, I know that's been a project that's been pending a long time, but after a couple bid situations, it's good that we finally have, have that down, so, eventually, you'll have the pleasure of figuring out what to do with that piece of town property, but not for a little while still. Route 18 project, as we talked earlier, as the planning board has confirmed that they are meeting next week with representatives from Mass Department of Transportation, they have also, they've invited local businesses and residents to that meeting, and we are going to, with the list that we put together from our efforts to try to get a business organization, a roundtable of sorts together, we'll be following up with, to those who have provided us with their contact information, to let them know about that, and in that vein, as I've mentioned, I will be there, and any members of the board that wish to be there, we will be asking the planning board to provide us with a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting, just to discuss the goal of creating this roundtable, so that we can hopefully start planning some, some initial sessions, so if anybody wishes to be the spokesperson, other than me, I'm more than happy to work with you on that, if not, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll be the, the draftee for that, so, but, like I said, if anybody's particularly interested and wishes to say some words at the beginning of that meeting, let me know. Next item here, last week, Dory did attend the Metro South Chamber of Commerce meeting, which did involve an update on the process with regard to the possible casino in Brockton. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the update speaks for itself, there really wasn't a lot of information that was particularly helpful, in terms of the planning and for surrounding communities, it was more of a status to date, is that more correct, so. Matthew Barry at Starwood has contacted me last week, and I told him I would speak to the board, with regard to introducing what appears to be the new master developer to the board of selectmen, and what the best format is for doing that, they are prepared to do it in a more informal way, meeting individually, or to come in front of the board, so, I told him, realistically, until I met with the board, I can't really respond to what the board feels is the best format to do that, so, so if, or multiple forms, whatever the board members feel is appropriate, obviously, there's the open meeting law that we have, we are concerned with, I know they're a private entity, but we are still a public entity, so, to the extent that we want to set up a time for them to come and meet the board at a meeting, we can do that, but if you give me your thoughts, or provide the chairman your thoughts on that, and I know that Mike has a, has had multiple get-togethers with Matt Barry over the years, in the Southfield development project, so.
Just a question, Rick, we still don't really have a master plan, per se, from them, and I don't even know if our.
Not to the extent that, yeah, we, I think there's a development goals, but I don't think there's a plan, so to speak, that made a full-blown development plan, I know that there are, with the zoning issues that are, that are on our own warrant, whether or not this, the legality of those, I know is being challenged by, by Southfield, by Starwood, whether or not the town of Abington can change certain zoning regulations, but there is interest, I had a developer, I'm sorry, a representative from a developer contact me, it was on my machine today, regarding the possibilities if the new zoning regulations go through, I don't know how to respond, because.
You're right.
I don't even know the legality of the zoning regulations yet, and, but I do, I haven't spoken to Matt Barry, I haven't spoken to, I'm sure it's Jim Young, who's the planner, planner up there to determine, that's, that's this week, so.
When these issues came before the planning board, did they, were they in attendance? Do you know, I mean, well, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is, yeah, it could be something that, that would bring a lot of legal cost to the town, you know, whether it's necessary or not, I don't know, I haven't got that information, but would it be worth having Matt Barry and Chris attend the meeting that we're going to get?
We could do that, in fact, it might not be a bad idea for, to, if we can have a meeting in advance, maybe just the chairman, I know, because, only, and only because I know you've met with.
No, I'd like to do that, I don't want to leave the rest of the board out, but it's tough to do that.
But I think to try to find the, the appropriate forum to introduce people is a little bit odd for government, it's just, it's just a mismatched animal, a little bit, but we obviously want to be very cognizant of the open meeting law without, so to have the entire board go over to Southfield in the afternoon, it's just, it just doesn't seem right, I think, even if we posted it, so, so, I think we'll have to discuss that with, maybe in the next couple of days, even a few of time.
Could we do something where, like, boards and, do they have any involvement in this process, you know, zoning and planning, we can all go over there together, and just have a tour of the place, I mean, whether we have posted, we would have to posted it, but if we're all invited, we can ask questions, we don't have to vote on anything, but, I mean, the only reason I say this is, we, the Lions Club went over there, when they first started developing, got a tour of some of the properties, and the duplexes they were building, it was really a neat tour, and they give a history in the, in the, but it's kind of neat, because, I mean, I would, I wouldn't be surprised if some of the people on some of these boards haven't been up there yet, you know, and see, this is the, here's where Abington's property is, you know, and here's what we're planning on doing, and so, it'd be kind of neat to get a tour of the property, you know, whether it's in an official capacity or nonofficial capacity.
Might be disappointing to see where our property is.
Probably, but at least, you know, at least when we talk about it, we'll know what we can envision, what we, what we learn.
Yeah, I think the, the issue in front of the board, though, is whether or not to, they were going to change from, I guess, to industrial, they wanted to change from highway commercial or something like to industrial, and as to whether or not that would say to the developer, hey, listen, I bought this, now all of a sudden you're going to change horses at midstream, and would that not say, you know, okay, you, you know, they have a lot of money, they have some deep pockets, so, it was just whether or not we had protection on the.
When was the last time they did an update at a selectman's meeting, so the viewers could see it too, I mean, they've changed, they've changed.
He was here probably a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Not since the nuke.
Yeah, well, that's my point, you know, everyone keeps hearing there's a new developer, new developer, this is the third one now?
Yeah, and there, and it's, you know, there isn't a new developer yet, but there's a, you know, a sales agreement in place.
I don't have a problem with us going over there and viewing it, but I think they should probably give a presentation on what their intentions are on camera.
I agree, I was thinking the same thing, why can't you do a combination of the two? You have them come in, they can formally introduce themselves to us, but I like Kenny's idea, too, about asking the planning board, the zoning board, us, site visits, I think.
Conservation, what was it?
I think there's a lot of people in town that are totally confused as to what's going on over there, and I think by us just going over there ourselves, it's not helping the, the residents.
So have them come in, we'll meet them, and then we'll schedule something over there.
That's fine, and I guess.
Either before or after, I don't think it matters.
Mr. Barry's only, was cognizant of, you know, wanting to know what the board felt is the best way to do introductions to a possible, I mean, again, what would appear to be the, the new developer, it hasn't.
Have the new developer come in, meet us, and invite us over, you know?
Well, we can do that, but I think, I think what we're talking about right now is the zoning changes, and you want to do that before the zoning changes or after, you know, I don't, I don't know, I'd definitely like to go over there, but I don't know.
But I think what Matt, Matt was looking for initially was just to introduce us.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, he's asking us what the most effective way is to do that, because, I mean, part of their confusion is, you know, they're, they're a national corporation, now it's easy for them to go and meet with the mayor, you know, there's no issues, is, I mean, in terms of protocol, or meeting laws, and, you know, so.
Invite them into a meeting and introduce themselves in the key places, and they can explain it.
So, is Starwood the master developer over there, or they're, they're the owners?
They are.
The owners.
They're the owners.
They're, yes.
And they're the master developer right now, but they're going to give the master development part to someone else, I'm confused as to what's going on.
My understanding is they're selling their assets, they're selling the assets.
They're selling it.
So once Mr. Barry introduces us to these people, he's gone, we'll never see him again?
No, I understand he's staying with the new folks.
He stayed with the new folks, so, okay, wow.
But Starwood's will be gone.
Starwood will be gone.
Starwood will be gone, and there'll be a new developer in there, but he's staying.
They have to accept all the contracts.
Yeah, and at one point, they had like, and it's still an issue, where they're going to get their sewer and water, and as you remember, we sat with Mr. Barry, Rick and I did, and tried to, you know, how is this going to affect the town, you know, he really couldn't answer the question, because he didn't have a master plan in place, so, until we get a master plan in place, we don't really know what effect that they're going to be over there, they had cited a sewage treatment plant on, which I think has already been permitted, permitted, permits have already been issued, I believe, but they cited that on our.
He was in here last meeting, two meetings ago, I asked him point blank, and he said the sewage plant is in Abington.
But whether or not they're going to proceed and do that, we don't know.
Yeah, right, it's, there's no question, it's planned for.
Yeah, because it was a $35 million project, which would, you know, be a lot of taxes.
And the water, they will not be getting from Abington Rockland, they will not allow us to give any more water away.
Right, don't say give it away.
Well, based upon the feedback.
Give it or sell it, we're not doing either.
It sounds like then I will go forward and try to set up a meeting with Mr. Barry, and whomever he believes from the possible new developer with the, at the, at the next appropriate board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, but in the meantime, you want to have them speak to the possible zoning changes.
Do we want them to speak, or do we want the zoning board to talk to us?
Well, they would have, the zoning board we want to, but I don't know that, I don't know that they've ever gone to the meeting to say, listen, this is going to affect us, this is going to, we're going to have problems with this, and if they do, I'd like them to state them, that's all, I'd like to know what we're getting ourselves into, if in town, if in fact the town adopts these zoning changes, it might be very good for the town, it might not affect them at all, I just don't have a good feeling about, about, you know, switching horses midstream, and I don't think they, you know.
Well, I guess you could make them aware, they're aware of the fact.
Yeah, they are aware, yes.
If they can get us something as to what their opinion is, to whether or not it's going to be.
Or you want them here when the zoning, Wayne Smith and them come?
Yeah, we can advise them.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think, what I would prefer to do, but it's up to the board.
Well, let's put them at first on the agenda for May 11th, and have the zoning board issues first, also.
You would be out of here by about 10:30, 11:00, just, yeah, that's fine, Kenny, agree with that, that's fine.
Okay, we will proceed accordingly, thank you. Next, brief issue, the Memorial Arch, as you know, the masonry work is done, and the bronze restoration work should be beginning next week, well, first week of May, and again, it is weather permitting, but it should only take a few days, so, again, we're, we're wrapping that up hopefully quickly, so, and Flag Day weekend is coming, so, if you're here around town, preparations are beginning for that, so, if, if civil war encampment event on that weekend, I know it's not the first time, last issue, real quick, it's not on here, but we are putting together a meeting in the very near future to discuss the possible other alternative access road with regard to the school project, just on the radar screen, something that we're working with, with, as it turns out, the new chairman, so.
Was there one other issue, too, that I'd asked you to look into, would that be appropriate to talk about now?
I believe, I know Dory sent an email to the board on a number of issues, was that the Bates?
Property on yesterday.
Yes, that is, that was purchased by, I'm sorry.
Mr. LaPointe.
Mr. LaPointe, yes, and he has a zoning board approval to turn that into six, four to six condos, thank you, so, obviously, that, that's, that was a year, a year ago, so, it's, again, it's, that is the intention.
We've had some residents ask questions about, you know, what was going on, okay.
So.
I don't know what his timetable is.
That's what I was going to say, could we talk to him and get a timeframe?
Be happy to.
Because the letter's almost 10 months old, yeah, it's from July.
Sure, you shall do so.
Did we say we'll get an update on that?
Yeah, I will, we'll email, once we have a word from, from Mr. LaPointe, what, if he has a timetable, we'll send that to you, and that doesn't have to wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
Great.
So the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, is?
Tentatively, it could be the fourth, I think we're going to work with the administration and see, might not be, it probably isn't going to be necessary, I'll, we'll email the members and go from there, and definitely on the 11th, and we'll set something up, now, one change I'd like to make, I don't know if it's possible, it'll be up to you guys, if we could get a pre-agenda, like on a Tuesday, so that the members could see what we had in front of us, and, and, you know, let me know, or, you know, whatever we wanted, maybe we want to make a change, or invite somebody in there, so, that would be helpful, because we, it seems like we get the, we get the agenda on Tuesday night, and then the packet on Thursday night, Friday, so it's kind of even too late to make any changes, it's posted, so my thought process was, if it's possible to get it on a Tuesday, we could, you know.
Just a quick question, because historically, I believe, Dory emails it to the chairman on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's currently being done.
And, so the chairman sees it before the rest of the board, a draft.
I never want you guys to see it, I just wanted to surprise you, so.
We're happy to email it to you.
Could we change that to Tuesday, and maybe we'll, you know, maybe, I, I just.
You want it emailed to the whole board, or just you?
Well, if you, probably if you just did it to me initially, and then I'll send it out on Tuesday night, we'll try that, I don't, I'm not guarantee it, I'm procrastinating, you're probably still going to get it on Thursday night, but, but, would it be okay to try it like that?
That's fine, just, just keep in mind, though, sometimes there are.
Things that are added at the last minute, no, I, I respect and understand that, but it would still give us time to, I'm just more concerned, I think, we covered a lot of ground tonight, a lot of good ideas, and, you know, give everybody a shot at, at, you know, if they want to bring something forward, that's all, so, other than that, anybody have anything else? Okay, public comment, please don't all stand up at once. One other thing, too, the new member, Alex, at some point, I'd like to have a legal come down and go over some of our, we haven't done it for a while anyways, what, what we have on the, you know.
Pending legal update?
Yeah, it probably would be wiser to wait until after town meeting, but just so you know, it's in the works, and.
Might be wiser financially to do it next fiscal year, maybe first meeting in July.
Oh, you're trying to tell me something.
No, it's just a.
Okay, that's fine, just, just as long as we're aware that we're going to head in that direction.
Pretty good.
I don't have anything else, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion to adjourn, seconded, any further comment? No, all in favor?
Agreed.
Thank you very much.